More on the record?
Yeah.
Hi, Mike.
Council agenda, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of May 15, 2018.
Introduction to posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Opus Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the Office of Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building and on the municipal website on December 20, 2017, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27, 2017, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 20, 2017. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net.
Please rise for the flag salute. Mr. DePiero, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Graniani is excused tonight as a result of the weather. Mrs. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Carriffy?
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, Township Attorney Jim Lott, CFO Ann Cucci, and Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, June 12, 2018, 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, June 19, 2018, at 7:30 PM. Regular meeting. Approval of minutes, presentations, reports. Town council. Any council members have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Township Attorney?
I have no report.
Thank you.
This call may be for Loretta's tree owner house.
Okay.
Hello. Jim?
Township Attorney.
Okay. The tree is in town tree of Loretta's house, so I called for...
All right. Why don't we move on to Township Clerk? Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Township Office Committees, reports?
I have one thing. The Environmental Committee would like to appoint Pat Delafuente formally to the Environmental Committee.
Okay, so make a motion for that?
Motion.
You need a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Ms. Pat Delafuente to the Environmental Committee. We have a motion, a second. Roll call. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council President, if I could put James Walsh, a tree guy, five seconds ago we called him, and he's on the phone, he's in front of Loretta's house right now.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know.
Great.
Is it a red house? Let's make sure he's in front of the red house.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, good. I apologize for the phone, but that's how I would know. Thanks, James.
Just so you know, you're up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, okay. Bye. He'll be out all night. There's trees all over the place. As we try to make sure we show how well and because it's a sacred trust, the work that we do, I thought both the Clerk, my Finance Director, and myself would like to let you know that we have had our Finance Mayor's meeting. And Colette, if you want to just, I know an email went out, and what the dates are for the presentations.
Sure. The budget hearing dates, we have May 30, which is a Wednesday, and it will be from 6:30 to 10:30. And June 4.
Fifth. Take the fifth.
Oh, yeah, fifth.
Take the fifth.
It's election night, right?
June 5. I'm sorry?
It's election night.
Oh, election night. That's why it was open.
No, that's not fair.
I wrote that in my email, the older one.
You would think as the Clerk, I would have said something.
Colette, on the second note, don't take the fifth.
You're gonna be busy that night.
Yeah. Yeah, so why don't we make it the fourth was on there? Are all the council members okay with the fourth?
If I may, what happened to 29, 30, 31, and 1?
It was on the list. It was on the list.
Those are all the nights that I could make.
Well, you can make the 30th, correct?
I can make the 30th.
That's one.
Yes.
And...
Can you make the fourth? Mr. DePiero?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, but...
The fourth is Precipity Hills High School Senior Award Ceremony.
Okay. What was another date? Do you folks have your datebook? Because this is important, if we can establish it right now.
7? I think we had the 7th.
The 7th?
Was it Thursday?
I can't do that day.
No.
But I can do the 30th.
Well, the 30th is good. We have the 30th.
Just so for clarification for the record, the budget hearings are two days this time, so, and if need be, we will make it a third day, but as of right now, it is June 30, which is a Wednesday, and we are in the process.
May 30.
May 30.
Man, this is not going well for me tonight, huh?
Why don't we have everybody send dates to Colette? We'll stick with, we know with the 30th, and then we'll send dates to Colette.
Someone said the 30th. What about the 31st, which is the next night?
I'm good for the 31st.
31st?
Anybody?
Okay. If that could work.
I mean, we're here, so it's never matter.
Yeah, no, I'm not good that night.
Okay. All right, so, you know...
How about the first?
How about the 29th? Friday night.
It's Friday?
Friday night budget hearing.
I'm available on the first. I was available that whole week.
First is good.
You know, one Friday night, yeah.
Everybody do the first.
This way you can get up early Saturday morning.
So this way, let's just say it is Wednesday, May 30. May 30, right?
That's good.
6:30 to 10:30, and June 1, from 6:30 to 10:30.
Okay.
So 6:01 and 5:30, for the record. Those are the dates of the budget hearing, both days from 6:30 to 10:30 PM.
Nothing more to report at this point. I think...
If, Colette, if I could ask you, if you could just give some notes from the meetings and just get them to the other council members?
Sure. I know Ann Geely's preparing minutes, so once she sends them to me, I'll make sure the entire council gets the...
Thank you.
There was an email I did read later in the day. You know, she does have a tendency to take extensive notes, so she had reached out to us, and I just said, because of the fact that the first one would be the 30th, she is gonna work on it, but she had to leave on time today, so...
Yeah, she said she'll have it actually done by tomorrow.
I said as long as she has it by the end of the week.
She'll have it tomorrow.
But, you know, because there's other things that, you know, but then we'll distribute them to the whole council.
And real quick, while we were on the subject, I'm sure our Parks and Forestry are gonna be out...
That's what he said.
...all night again, so I just wanted to thank them again for, I know they're gonna have a lot of work, just based on what I saw driving here in my own neighborhood, so...
We all believe something did touchdown, because those trees just came flying, flying out.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And James was supposed to go to a conference, but he says, you know, he won't be gone tonight.
How about any outages? Are there a lot of outages?
JCPenney reported 2,000 homes in their area in New Jersey around.
Yeah, I'm one of them.
I think the mayor has touchdown in, he's in Newark. He might be out of Newark now, but not too long...
I had heard somebody said it was up to 6,000 homes in Precipity that ran the power.
It is, it's up to 6,000 in Precipity.
So how long will that take? I wonder...
Hopefully you'll have it tonight, back tonight. I think a tree fell on a car on Route 53.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Did anybody get hurt, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Bids taken, April 26, 2018, road reconstruction project, Mount Tabor, to be taken, May 3, 2018, road reconstruction plan, Knoll Road, Vale Road to Buckingham Road, March 10, supply of managed polymer for the wastewater treatment plant, May 17, new dive equipment or approved equivalent for the Precipity Rescue Recovery Squad, and May 31, 2018, WWTP generator improvements. Quotations, proposals, qualifications. At this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public.
If you come up, just please state your name and address and sign in. You'll be given five minutes. I've been pursuing my interest in the open space acquisition in the Water View, and I found some interesting information here, I think that everyone needs to know. There was, the township informed Green Acres in February 2017 that they wish to use the balance of funding from an open, open Green Acres project for part of Block 421, Lot 29, 9.26 acres. I believe the lot was later subdivided, and Lot 29 was renumbered. They don't give me the number. The township proposed no other use than open space. Mysteriously, in January 2018, the town withdrew the application for the Green Acres for Precipity. And the town made the choice to withdraw the request to use the balance of the Green Acres funding. It was not rejected, since it was eligible for Green Acres funding. Only the township can answer the question of why the request was withdrawn. So I would say, is this spite work for Mr. Inglisino? I don't know what the, or is it a smokescreen that it never could be Green Acres anyway? I'm not sure, because they, the state said Precipity was eligible to receive funds. So if Precipity was eligible to receive funds, why would you withdraw the application? That means that Precipity taxpayers are gonna foot the full bill. So that, it's, there's some real funny business here.
I say that there's no funny business. What I will do, Nick, for your...
Do you want to run?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was done. Oh, yeah, more.
Well, here's the other line here. "The whole idea of compensating the landowner for open space portion of the tract is a repugnant idea. Zoning ordinances typically have coverage limits and open space requirements for various uses, as well as protections for critical areas. The public is entitled to these benefits at no cost." And then finally, picking the pockets of Green Acres with some deal between the developer and a municipal attorney to compensate the developer for what could have been obtained by proper ordinance is pretty revolting. When they rezoned that property, they went through that whole thing, how come it wasn't rezoned with the, with that as open space or a buffer? It really, I mean, somebody should look in, I think somebody should look into this. I really believe that it's, that it's like a kickback to the developer. It should have never worked out that way, knowing that the overwhelming public opposition, there was no real justification for that, and we're paying RD $3.5 or $3.7 million. There's something wrong with that. Really, somebody should look into it. And I have an open public request, I hope is answered soon concerning that issue. And one final thing, I hope the Environmental Committee is gonna take on some of this anti-plastic, possibility of anti-plastic things. There's, they're finding now, mostly with styrofoam and plastic straws, is actually in your drinking water now, and it's actually inside plants and animals. So it's getting, it's getting worse and not better, and something has to begin somewhere, so we have to, you know, we're only from Precipity. But plastic does not biodegrade, but instead photo degrades into smaller pieces of plastic, causing pollution that is virtually impossible to remediate. When plastic enters our waterways, it absorbs toxic chemicals, DDT, PVCs, PHAs, flame retardants. In 2011, the National Ocean and Atmospheric Association found that plastic debris accumulates pollutants, such as PVCs, up to 100 to 1 million times the level found in seawater. So when you're adding plastic to the seawater and everything else, it's just making everything more and more toxic. And, you know, so whatever you can do, if it's not hopeless.
Nick, did you say 2018 when you were talking about that Water View?
Yeah, it was withdrawn in January. That's when Mr. Soriano became the mayor. That's what I'm saying. Why was it withdrawn in January 2018? It was withdrawn in 2018.
Yeah, I'm gonna address that.
That's...
There's only other, one other comment about your, about the plastic.
Yeah.
That there's also plastic that's, I guess, gathered, that they call it the Great Pacific Patch.
Oh, yeah.
It's the size of Texas, and it's all plastic bottles, plastic bags, and if it's not dispersed within the next year or two, then it's gonna be a major problem and more difficult to disperse.
And there's more than one island, too.
Right.
Go to the Caribbean or anyplace that's loaded.
Yeah.
Go to the Jersey Shore, you don't have to go anywhere.
Yeah.
And straws.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's been some pushback on that. Some of the towns are banning or doing something to...
Yeah. And believe it or not, another source of the microplastic pollution is filtered cigarettes. There's actually plastic in a, in a lot of the filters.
Yeah.
So it's just out of control. It's something from the free market, that it's all about profit with no other concept. It's just, you know, as long as they make them, they don't care about anything else. And it's really, it's immoral. It's catching up with everything, and our short period of time, plastic is destroying the ecology of everything.
The size of Texas, that's a lot of plastic.
Well...
Yeah.
They're making more now, and they should be making less, and, yeah, you can even get beer in plastic. That's like a sacrilege. Okay, all right.
Oh, Ellen, did you?
Yeah, what I would like to address, I'm not gonna address the $3.5 million, because I was not here when that arrangement was made. I didn't get here till June 16 of 2014, and Ann came a little after that. I'm glad Ed is here in the audience, because he can address that at that point, that, whatever that arrangement was. What I do is pursue funding, wherever it is, for my whole career. There was approximately $721,000 that we found, Julie, who works in purchasing, but works very closely with the open space. Gabe, before he left, there was an arrangement of helping out the state with using some of Precipity's open space money, and they did. Then there was a promise, and you'll get all of this, and the council will, it's documented in all emails, because Julie and I thought, okay, they made a commitment that you, that Precipity would never lose the $721,000. So you know we've purchased a few other open space things, but it never was the opportune time. So we thought, well, to save some, the residents, you know, the fact that it came out of our open space monies, that $3.5, that we would pursue through Green Acres, the state Green Acres, and spoke to, and had them come out and review it, so that we could apply back into our open space the $721,000 plus and use it. The timing was, they were actually out in the wintertime, so it was close to probably December. They came out, they went on, and as they walked the property, Julie said something, and Lisa, Lisa Stern, or whatever, Lisa from Green Acres said, oh, once the, once the value, some value document was made, the name escapes me, but what happened is that, she said, you're no longer eligible to get the $721,000. That's why it was withdrawn, because we weren't allowed to use it. We fought them, as, you know, to the point of saying, how can you make an arrangement with a municipality and say, you'll never lose the 721, and for all intents and purposes, you know, we, hey, maybe with the new governor, we'll maybe be able to get that. That's in Precipity's name, and that's why it was pulled back, because we weren't allowed to use it for that property.
The thing that gets me, though, is it could have been zoned that way.
As I said, yeah.
Remember during the whole thing, they're talking about the 50-foot and the 300-foot? If the Highlands Interactive map shows...
I don't disagree with you at all.
Yeah. See, if we were in the Highlands, this would have never happened.
Right.
It couldn't happen. It'd be impossible to happen.
I hear you, Nick, but what I was addressing was the 721, just so you knew, was not, there was no, that one was not a, you know, a hidden agenda or anything.
So it's just...
And I will give you documentation about that much, on how hard we pursued that 721,000.
But it says the town withdrew in January.
They had to withdraw it, because they weren't gonna, you know, we weren't gonna get it.
The Green Acres says that, no, it says you were eligible. I have it right here in writing from Green Acres.
Okay, I'll get you the rest of it.
All right.
You don't have everything.
Yeah, well, hopefully if I get my OPR, but what's her name? Amy Samoski.
Yeah.
Samoski.
Yeah. That's early on, and then when Lisa came out, Amy was ready to give it to us. Lisa came out, and some wording was said, and she said, the value now of the property was somehow less than because of some sale. I'm not gonna get into it now, because I would be speaking information that, you know, I don't have all the wording.
Yeah, was it...
But, yeah.
Was it, was the application put in before or after the rezon? Because remember, that was...
That's where, that's where...
That was zoned farmland.
Right.
It couldn't have cost, it couldn't have cost that much.
Yeah.
Could've got it cheaper.
Yeah.
And then a buffer zone, who wants a buffer zone?
I will get you the documentation that showed that, you know, they wouldn't let us do it.
My opinion, though, it's a...
And we even said to them, what about if another open space piece comes up? And you'll see that in writing, too, because Ann's saying, right, it was right. And they said, no, now you've lost it. So it was a money grab by them.
All right, but it just seems like a, just a coincidence, January 2018, Precipity withdrew it. I don't know. Okay.
You'll have the reasoning why.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Oh, no, it has nothing to do, no, they weren't gonna give it to us.
Good evening. My name is Hank Heller, and I live at Ten Fenwick Place in Precipity. Some weeks ago, Mayor Soriano had a town hall meeting at Rockaway Meadow School, and I had the opportunity to tell him and his staff about a problem that I think that is endemic all over Precipity, and in fact, Ms. Peterson was at that meeting. And that is where single-family homes may be being flipped, and they are being rented out to multiple families or multiple users. And I gave four addresses to the mayor's staff, and I had also previously called Beth at the Housing Department and explained to her the fact that there are some homes right around my house that are being very poorly kept, many, many cars there, six, seven, eight, nine cars and more at night. And I know that there is an ordinance in town that that's not permitted, that one is not permitted to rent out rooms, so to speak. And I got a call this morning from Beth. I had written, I spoke to the mayor, and he asked me to send a letter, and I did, and they responded to me. And I want to thank, by the way, the mayor's not here, but I'd like to thank him for...
He's on a tarmac in Newark Airport. That's where he is. He would've been here.
Please, I hope that he will hear that I'm respectful and appreciative of him and his staff looking into the situation and telling me that they're going to work on it. It turns out that the reason I came tonight was, we have been talking about, my wife and I, about residing our home for a long time. We've been in town for 49 years, living in this home. My children went to school with Mike's children, Councilman DePiero, and we'd like to stay in town. We would really like to stay in town, but we see the town being degraded constantly by investors, either renting out rooms or renting out whole buildings, and I don't think that is helpful. Many of those, the four units that I'm talking about are in horrible shape, okay? And by the way, the mayor said that, I'm sorry, Beth said that they had found that one of the houses is a rental unit, and the others, the owners are living there, okay? And she said that they can do something about the rental unit, they can't do much about the personal unit, and I said, I didn't understand that. She said, well, Ed, it's almost like telling people how many children they can have. And I thought about that for a few minutes, and then I thought I'd come to talk to you folks tonight, rather than just letting it sit, because I know that there's an ordinance that prohibits this, number one, and number two, it's nothing like telling somebody how many children they can have. The fact of the matter is that we're not permitted to have, to have businesses run out of private homes in Precipity. I know this, and that is the reason why she can do something, or the town can do something about the home that has about nine cars outside it, right, every single night, okay? The issue is that even if you live in that house, if I live in a house and I rent out rooms, and there's many cars out there, I know that somebody can investigate by looking up those license plates and seeing who those cars belong to. And I know it because it was done under a prior administration about 10 years ago on a house that right abuts my property. And there are things that can be done, and I'd like us to be thinking about, as a governing unit, what we really want to have happen in our town, whether we want it to be able to be used the way I see it being used in some instances, in too many instances, in our community. And I think that it's not helpful to us, and I certainly don't want to invest another 50 grand in my house if, in fact, the houses around it are gonna be rented out and look like hell. So I'm gonna leave you with that, and I also want to say, I also want to thank Councilwoman Graniani, who I know couldn't be here tonight, because she reached out to me also on this issue, and she is very, very interested in it and very concerned about it, as is the mayor and his staff. So I'm hoping that the rest of you can become very interested in it and solve a problem that I think is truly debasing our town in a serious way. Not only in how it looks, but I think it's adding costs that we're not even thinking about in many cases. I'm talking about the cost of schooling and policing and many, many other issues that have to do with how we live. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
way. I don't mean it to be. I'm talking about transparency.
Could you speak up a little bit, Pat?
I'm talking about transparency. We've all ran on the Statue of Transparency, trying to make everything as transparent as possible. But since this administration, and the old administration also, when questions are asked by residents, specific questions, to me, that transparency is in how you answer those questions. And if you don't answer those questions, there's either something wrong, or you have no idea what you did. That's what I get out of it. I know there's been many questions asked since the beginning of January, where people have not gotten answers, and I thought we were gonna be a little different. But the one big thing is transparency to me is not just, you know, putting things out on the computer, it's also answering questions that residents do put up for you, put up to you to answer. So just keep that in mind, please. So just keep that in mind, please. On another note, on May 3rd, I went in to file an Internal Affairs complaint. And why I did this was because I was very disturbed with finding out that we have a policy on record, and nothing's being done with it. This policy was created in December 14, and it was called Exit Procedures for Separation of Duty from the Police Department. And if you noticed, that was December 14. I just want you to keep that date in mind. And on page 3, it tells you of what is needed to come back to the police department. Any and all electronic information and electronic information devices shall be turned over to the officer's immediate supervisor. Now, if you remember, we've spent millions of dollars in the last couple of years trying to get back a device from a police officer. We have spent millions of dollars. That procedure was written after the police officer left, the year after the police officer left, this procedure was made up. So it wasn't in effect at the time that officer left. But since that officer left, and since that came out and was made, we have two patrol officers and two sergeants who retired. And they retired in 2015, 16, and 17. And on their exit papers, there is no mention...
I just, I just wanna make sure I have the right date. I have December 14. What is the year?
December of 14.
Oh, okay, because we had 17. We didn't, that's what we're like...
December of 14.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
I have a certification sheet that the two patrol officers and the two sergeants were given a device, and they signed off on it. But yet, on their department separation, there's no list of a device being handed So my question is, I have nothing against police, policemen, anything like that. What I have a problem with is that things are not done the same way for the same people. Things are made up, and nobody's told about them, like that, that exit procedure policy. We didn't know that it was made up in December of 14. We were told that it was in existence, and without these records, I wouldn't have known that. I find it highly despicable that we now have a policy on file, and four officers have retired since then and have those devices out there. And I would think those that pushed so hard to get those devices back from Mr. Carriffy should now be pushing even harder to get these devices back from these four individuals. And also find out why we are not following procedure in every case. What is wrong? I just think this is an embarrassment, and I, I would hope that you guys will look into this and see what you can do about it, because what's good for one person is good for another. We need clarification on stuff like this. I don't like somebody's name being destroyed over something so trivial, apparently. Thank you.
Pat, can I ask you about your first point on the transparency? Are you receiving notifications of the Transparency Committee meetings from Tom Waika?
No, actually, I haven't looked at them. I've had some family...
Okay, I, okay.
...thought they're out there now, and that's part of it.
But you're getting, you're getting the emails.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
See, no one else come forward. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded, no, motion made by Mrs. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Council President, can I just give you an update on the, on the Knoll now?
Sure.
Because I didn't have a chance. I just want to let you know that we had signed a contract, we have a contract into Kemper Sports now. They're just going through the review period. I have a, a conference call tomorrow to go over the accounting side, and we expect them to be in right after Memorial Day, the week, the first week, hopefully, of June to begin. I just want to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you. Ordinance is introduction, none. Second reading and public hearing, none. Non-consent agenda, Mr. DePiero?
Resolution 2018-101, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, awarding a contract to Midwest Construction, Inc., for Knoll Road reconstruction from Veil Road to Buckingham Road. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2018-102, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, awarding a contract to DLS Contracting, Inc., for road reconstruction project for Mount Tabor. Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda. Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterix are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved in, by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Close session. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act of PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from certain, from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn into closed session.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Peterson, Mrs. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Are we going to state the purpose of the meeting before we vote on it?
They said it was attorney-client privileged information.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Okay, we are now going to, just recess into closed session.
Will there be any action taken from that?
There'll be no action anticipated.
Just to let the public know, so...
And just in furtherance of the question that answered by, asked by Councilman DePiero, the nature of the discussion will be involving the prior litigation involving the township and CBS billboards. That goes back to 2004 and 2014, I believe. It's just out of subtext for that.
Thank you.
That's why he's here. He's got the...
Probably no action taken.
Right, right.
No.
Okay, entertain a motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Have a great night, everyone.